Good evening. Tonight, the time is 6:12 and we're gonna have to call this central meeting, town hall, meeting to order, a little late. And we may be dealing with something more of an informational town hall tonight. But so far, that's what we have. First thing to get through is a roll call.
All right, member Pratt?
I am here.
Member Martinez and Carlson are absent. Member Schwanger, are you on Zoom? Oh. Oh, it looks like the chat is disabled. Yeah, she can't use it.
She can't what?
And she can't say anything. She just sees your home screen. And there's no chat. So I think we might be rocking with just an informational meeting. Does that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay.
The video is good.
Oh, she says she can see us now. But I don't think she's able to talk. Oh, can you just let her in? Because she'll want to be able to speak freely. Becky, are you able to use it now? She's off now? I don't know if she's gonna be able to. That's why she wanted to use the chat feature. Because I think she's traveling. Okay, she says she's on and she can hear and see us, so she should be able to attend the entire meeting. So, um, I guess we'll do this. So she's here and I, Atlas Pearson, am here.
Okay. Let's, uh, going forward, do we have, can't, we can't approve the previous minutes, can we?
I mean, she's technically here.
I see, okay.
Yeah, she's here, so.
Next thing on the agenda, for the consent agenda, is to approve the meetings from the previous, from both June 10th surf and May 13th surf. So, sorry if you'll give me a minute just to go through.
Uh, move approval.
Aye, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Becky's proven. Okay, so the next thing moving on in the agenda is a discussion. And I'm sorry, actually, we're only really able to hear the discussion, uh, first, uh, from, I'm sorry, called for a high patrol. If you will, I think the microphone and then this camera will, this turn to you to present information and...
I really wasn't, I'm, I'm Dan Fanzler. I'm the lieutenant commander. I'm the commander of the CHP in Lake County. I don't really have anything to present. I'm here to answer questions or can, you know, document any concerns in the county on the north side of the lake. I'm happy to be here. What can I say? You know, we have about nineteen officers working patrol right now in the county. We're supposed to have twenty-five, so we're a little short. Most of those officers, uh, well, probably sixty percent of them are pretty new on the department. We have some in training, which means they just graduated the academy and now they're out on the road, learning the job of the highway patrol with a trainer. So you might see two people in one car and that's usually what that's about. We've, uh, we, we keep, uh, statistics on crashes and incidents that happen within the county and we kind of identify problem areas in the county. And so when we have an opportunity to do an enforcement activities, we usually try to, kind of focus our resources on areas where we know we're having issues, you know, crashes, DUI crashes, fatalities, um, you know, crimes on state property. So, um, you know, Highway 20, we've had some, we've had some issues with pedestrian fatalities in the past few months. Mostly in Upper Lake and Nice. I think we had one, uh, female pedestrian fatality in Laserna, maybe in February. We keep stats on that. We, we investigate those and we try to come up with, um, solutions to try to help prevent those type of incidents. It's difficult with pedestrian fatalities because they're not in a vehicle, so you never know where they are or where they're gonna be at any given time. But we have done some focused enforcement campaigns recently, um, on Highway 20. Mostly between, I'd say, Blue Lakes and, uh, you know, going to Glen Haven. We had a maximum enforcement period this last weekend for Fourth of July. Fortunately, we had no fatalities in the county over the weekend, which is, you know, what we're shooting for, trying to prevent people from dying on the roadways and, and vehicle accidents. So we're mostly the traffic authority. We're the law enforcement traffic authority for the county. We don't get involved in property crimes and other things that the sheriff's department usually handles. But, um, I'm happy to be here, answer any questions. If anyone has any comments, I'd be happy to take them.
Yeah, hold on one second. We could have one, uh, trying to get her to unmute speak, because it happened, it's, it's working.
I came here at the invitation of Supervisor Crandall, obviously, and I'm happy to, you know, continue to participate in these meetings.
I have one question. Um, I know at one of the last meetings, uh, some people had brought up the fact of people driving around on motorcycles, dirt bikes, no helmets, going fast. Have you, have you guys had any sort of update on that or found anything out?
Uh, we get those calls quite often, Pile Road, um, other places in the North Shore. When we receive information, we will go out and, you know, respond to the area and try to, try to catch people, um, driving crazy, recklessly, whatever you want to call it. Um, it's hit or miss. You know, I don't think we've had any really recent incidents that I can remember. We had a, we had a ATV fatality on Bartlett Springs Road, which was quite a ways up the road, into the ruralness of the county, um, involving a juvenile and his father. His father, they were in a pretty large size ATV and, um, they were, I don't know, for whatever reason, they left the roadway and rolled and they were both ejected and both injured. The father succumbed to his injuries at the scene. He was alive, after the crash, but he didn't, uh, he didn't survive. And then the son actually had to walk, I think, a few miles for help before somebody actually, before he ran into somebody and, um, called for help and he was airlifted out. And he's, he had some moderate injuries, but he's gonna survive. But, yeah, we do, we do get those calls for motorcycle, you know, reckless motorcyclists and ATVs on occasion, and we try to, we try to respond to those when we can. It's a large county and on any given day, um, you know, I think at most, on a good day, we would have four officers patrolling at one time. So if you think about that, that, you know, we have to designate somebody for the South County near Middletown, someone to patrol, you know, east to Colusa County line, moving their way this way into Laserna and Glen Haven and, and Nice, and we'll have somebody up north in Lakeport. Um, and then somebody on the west, Highway 29, from Lakeport, Kelseyville, um, Lower Lake. So, you know, we're spread thin, but we do, we take those calls seriously. We try to respond to them when we can when we're not busy. And if you ever have, um, a specific complaint on someone or a vehicle or a motorcycle, if you call the CHP office in Kelseyville, um, and give them information, they'll write it down. We call it a traffic complaint, basically. We take the information and then when we have briefings, whatever officer's designated for that section of the county, we'll, we'll hand out that information to him or her. And then ultimately, you know, they'll, they'll try to respond and, and patrol, try to, you know, track down, locate these people. But, you know, it's, uh, like I said, we can get busy at times and one, one incident, one serious crash will occupy at least two officers to investigate for several hours. So then, you know, that leaves maybe two left if, if we're lucky. Sometimes we have as little as two people working the road on, on a given shift, so. It's not ideal. We're working on getting better. I guess I could follow up by saying that, you know, the highway patrol in general, statewide, is actively recruiting heavily. May not be something, a career that you're interested in, but, um, it's definitely, um, a major topic in the state. I think statewide, the highway patrol is down over a thousand officer positions. And that's, I think, reflective of a lot, of a lot of law enforcement agencies. A lot of law enforcement agencies are short staffed and are recruit, actively recruiting. And I, I think the sheriff's department and the two police departments in the county are no different. But, um, if you know anyone between the ages of twenty-one and thirty-five, I'll give my little pitch, please go onto our website. It's chp-made-for-more.com. And there's all kinds of information on the website. You can apply to be an officer. There's also dispatching jobs and administrative jobs and automotive technician jobs. And there's, there's a lot of different, um, jobs that are offered by the highway patrol other than just being a uniformed officer. But, you know, it is something that we're actively pursuing all the time, looking for, you know, qualified candidates that are interested in being a highway patrol officer. And again, if you access that website, um, there's lots of good information. You can always call the local office and, and express your interest, come down, talk to us, ask questions, even, even, um, ask to do a ride along. Unfortunately, we don't do ride alongs. It's just willy-nilly for anyone. You have to be actively pursuing a career with the highway patrol in order to, to, um, you know, for me to approve a ride along currently. But it is something that, you know, I wanted to throw out there.
We have a question from Zoom, from Becky Schwanger. Uh, what is CHP doing to address the speeding on Country Club Drive?
The speeding on this roadway here, Country Club Drive? Like specifically, I would be remiss to say that we're doing anything directly. If somebody, I, I don't recall getting any, um, information about Country Club Drive recently, but I know that the officers that patrol this area realize that this is one of the, the, um, I guess, backroads to, to, to bypass Highway 20 that people use and speed on. We actually try to focus our, um, speed enforcement on a lot of the, um, problematic roadways in the county. Unfortunately, there's a lot of them and there's a lot of state highways, Highway 29, Highway 20, um, 175, 281, and the list goes on and on. But if there's a specific complaint, like I said, on, on a particular vehicle or a specific time of day where people are speeding, you want to call the office and give us that information, then we'll do our best to deploy our resources when we can to, um, to try to do some enforcement.
It seems we have another question on Zoom from Kathy McWiggin. Go ahead and speak, Kathy?
Now, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Two things. I wanted to say, um, how's the highway patrol? I know that statewide, you have, um, a pretty intense program about pedestrian safety. And I wondered whether or not you have thought about providing or offering, um, reflective tape or reflective Velcro patches that people who walk a lot might be willing to put on their jackets or, or clothing to make it easier to see them? Because that's a huge problem on, on Highway 20. It's just very difficult to see people.
Yes, that's, that's a good suggestion. We don't have a lot of resources. We don't hand out a lot of, like, safety material to the public. We don't have reflective vests that we hand out. But, um, I have had conversations with the county, um, uh, working with them about some of the safety measures for Highway 20 specifically, since we've had the pedestrian fatalities. I was one of the, um, main instigators on getting, um, the crosswalks that are gonna be illuminated. And I think twenty locations throughout Highway 20 from, now, I could be wrong on the number. It's kind of changed over time, but I've been working with Caltrans and working with Supervisor Crandall and, uh, working with the county to come up with some solutions. And that was one of the, the big ones that they were able to approve. And they're gonna start construction this year, I believe, on some illuminated crosswalks. I know that pedestrians don't always use the crosswalks on Highway 20, but it was, um, it was a simple, um, suggestion that, you know, it took a lot of work to get approval, through Caltrans and to find the money for. But I will definitely keep that in mind.
There might also be nonprofits that would be willing to, to purchase the tape. If, or collaborate with other law enforcement agencies. It's just a thought because it's a fairly inexpensive option. Whether or not people would use them, it, it could easily save lives. The second thing I wanted to say is thank you so very much. I don't have the name of the officer who actually provided this service, but a local resident was in an accident last fall, winter, um, in Kelseyville. And he travels with a small dog. At the time of the accident, he needed to be hospitalized. And one of your officers picked up that tiny little dog and kept that dog safe until a friend could, took, took the dog back to the, um, station and kept the dog safe until a friend could come and pick her up. And I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for that.
That's, uh, thank you for telling me that, yeah. We do, on a ca, actually, supr, and we had a stray dog that we found today in Kelseyville in the heat that was laying in the middle of the roadway that we brought back to our office and, um, had a, had a caller and had a tag. And we weren't able to find the owners directly, but we found people through social media that knew the owners. And so we kept the dog at the office for three or four hours today. We had a, you know, we had a, um, a temporary, uh, what would you call mascot? In the, in the office. So, yeah, we do that from time to time. We do, you know, try to, um, provide whatever kind of assistance we can for people when they're in a time of need, you know, after an accident, stuff like that. We, we, we can use animal control, but if we know we can find somebody to, to, to take, uh, take, take a pet versus, you know, having to put them in doggy jail, we'll do it, you know?
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question. Uh, last year here at the senior center, we had, yeah, you guys brought somebody in at the senior driving class?
Yes, yes.
It's pretty good. We have like twenty-five people or whatever, and we're wanting to do it again. You guys still?
Yes. We have a lot of safety programs that we offer from time to time. It's more difficult now, um, like I talked about earlier with our short staffing. I had to actually, um, remove my public information officer and send him back to the road because it was more important to be able to provide, you know, the level of service that we, we need to provide to the public. So I'm actually currently filling that role, um, on top of everything else of being the public information officer. But there are several of us that are trained in providing certain safety programs throughout the year. We come up with a schedule. It's not really a fixed schedule. It's kind of a floating schedule, based on need and requests. We do a sta, we do a program called Start Smart, which is for, for teen drivers. Mostly when they get in trouble, if they get stopped for, you know, a traffic violation as part of their, I don't know what you want to call it, as part of their, um, uh, in order to keep their license and not have it affect their insurance, they come to us and we teach them about driver safety as a teen. We have the Age Well Drive Safe, which is the one you're speaking of, um, that we offer a couple times a year. Uh, we would do it more, um, and maybe we will do it more when we have more, more staffing. But, um, we just, I think our last Age Well Drive Safe class we held in Kelseyville, I have a, um, a volunteer that works for me, a senior volunteer who kind of coordinates that. She lets me know when there's enough interest in a certain area and then we try to come up with a date and time. So if, if you have that type of request, if you call our office and just tell them that there's plenty of interest in Laserna, one of the sergeants, um, will kind of coordinate the next time we're, we're able to...
Probably get a sign up sheet. And when, I can tell, we had like twenty, to make it worthwhile, that we had like twenty, twenty-five like we did last year.
Okay. Yeah, I can teach the class. I have a supervisor that can teach the class. I have one officer that used to teach it when he was in PIO that's still, so we're still offering that, just not regularly. We kind of wait until we have enough interest and then we try to come up with a date and time and we can provide that.
Do you have any other questions on Zoom?
No.
No, oh, okay. I'll, I'll put your hand down. I'm sorry. Becky, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to thank you, uh, well, your two officers that came to one of our structure fires on Merced Street. And they were very helpful with the evacuations. Uh, this was, I believe, last month. And, um, also, um, the woman that was there, officer, I think she was doing like FTO time.
Officer Lee, yeah.
Yeah, she actually asked me for a hose and she helped put out some of the fire. I think she was afraid the flames were getting a little too close to her patrol car. But, um, anyhow, I wanted to thank her. Um, I did send a message to your CHP Facebook page.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you. And, yeah, I, I, I remember that incident. It was, it was pretty late at night. It was dark, for sure. My supervisor was sending me pictures of Officer Lee holding a hose, um, helping fight the fires. The funny thing is, is she's a former firefighter. She actually worked for San Francisco Fire Department. And, and so she actually really enjoyed that. I think, you know, it was, uh, a good time for her. So, um, I'm glad we could help.
Yeah, thank you.
Any others? Yeah, Greg, did you have a question for CHP? Go ahead.
I do, I've, I've got a question. Do you, do you guys think if, so you have one off, one officer for, for, uh, Norishard, for sure?
Mm-hmm, typically.
Do you guys think that you can do a loop around here, like, come back and drive, you know?
Yeah, like from twenty to Country Club?
Yeah, and then roll up on Thirteenth Avenue to watch it. It's, it's always like...
Sure, no problem.
It's pretty wild, you know? You get some cars there.
Yeah, yeah, briefings.
Roll through, run around through here.
Yeah, that's no problem. When, uh, when we have briefings and we're getting ready to go out for the day, let the officer know that that's a request and we can accommodate that.
It's, it seems like I've seen a lot more, especially the sheriffs through here. And then there's multiple one, you know, there's like two, sometimes three, four, five.
Well, we work hand in hand with the sheriff's department. Obviously, we're both focused on unincorporated areas of the county. They focus on, you know, the crime portion and, and we focus on the traffic portion, but we work together. So, yeah, I will pass that along. No problem.
Thank you. And anything else online? Is there more hands raised?
Uh, nobody else.
Okay. All right. And thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. So next item we have on the agenda is a discussion and likely no action again. Uh, more informal information from Lake County Public Works, if you mind. Would you come up? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Glenn March. I'm the new Public Works Director for the county. I have taken, I started work on June, June third. I became the Public Works Director on, uh, July first. So I've had a month to learn what is happening in the county. Uh, my initial takeaways are, the county has a very hardworking staff compared to other agencies I've worked at. Lake County is very unique. It has a roads department that actually does road rehabilitation. There are few agencies that actually perform the work that our road department is performing. So they do a, a good job and, um, uh, you should be very happy with, um, the Department of Public Works for what they've done over the years. I'm gonna do my pitch for jobs. The county has twenty-five job openings right now. The county has, um, a great application process where you can go in, input your, um, experience and your profile, and you can apply for a job. And you can, if there's another job that comes up, you can tweak your experience if necessary and apply for another job. So it's, once you get your data in there, it's real easy to apply for multiple jobs. So right now, just as an example, if anyone's a veterinarian, um, animal control director, we also have heavy equipment operators, office assistants. We're looking for several parks maintenance workers. Uh, we're looking for a weighmaster at the landfill. So there's a variety of projects, sheriff's deputies. There's a museum technician position, which I don't know of, which would be interesting. So check out the county's website if you're interested in working for the county. The, um, I understand at a previous meeting, there was a discussion regarding a large walnut tree on Thirteenth that the branches were falling down. So there was previously discussion about removing the tree. Your roadway maintenance workers wanted to keep the tree. So, uh, we took their recommendation to keep the tree and they will be out there this week or next week to remove the branches, thin out the tree and reshape it. So that will address that issue and hopefully it's satisfactory to most everyone in the community. So the tree will not be removed. Upcoming projects, uh, we do have, plan on improving the, uh, pedestrian crossing at, uh, Country Club Drive and Ogden Road. Currently, we're requesting a proposal from one of our consultants. Hopefully, we'll get that, um, project out to bid next year. So that intersection should be improved a little bit next year. The county administrative officer has asked the various, um, department heads who do projects to put together a capital improvement, uh, plan. So it will provide a little more transparency about what the special districts department, the public works department, the water resources department, and our public facilities department is up to over the next ten years. A great opportunity to provide public input, um, as you, as the, um, this information is made public. And typically, that, those plans are incorporated into the annual budget and they'll be part of the budget. In advance of the budget hearings, we will probably have some working sessions to go through the plans for the different departments. So a great opportunity to give input. Speaking of safety on the roadway, the Lake County APC is updating its local road safety plan. So what that will allow us to do is, uh, get more funding for projects in the future. So it's important that, um, and they get all the data from the sheriffs, the highway patrol, and identify where accidents have happened and proposed. and identify where accidents have happened and propose conceptual solutions. So. So anyways, the engineering department right now, probably the next fiscal year, has already been determined by the previous public works director. We normally plan a year in advance for projects upcoming. So I'll be taking over. I'm going to try to provide a little more transparency to the supervisors and the public so they can make informed decisions on where to spend county dollars. And so that is my plan. So, and I'm new to the area, so I'm learning and I don't come in with bias about what should be done. So it'll be a very data-driven process.
Thank you very much. I believe, looks like Charlie has a question for you.
Yeah, the fellow that was here before about the roads and redoing the roads in the county?
Yes.
And when he was here before and they were talking about which one area is going to go first and second and around. And at that time, we were like, well, is there any way that you can come around and, you know, do some in all the areas rather than just do all one area and then not the other and things? Because our road, Becky will tell you that the paramedics going from Country Club to twenty, the only decent road that you don't have to do about two miles an hour is Thirteenth. Because, you know, La Stran, because the only roads that have been taken care of, I've been here 35 years in La Cern, is Country Club and La Stran, Thirteenth. So anyway, I was just wondering, he said that was something that they would think about. So in other words, if we're 10th on the list, we don't have to wait 10 years.
So my, it's going to be the supervisors who direct staff on which, how to develop a plan that they want to see implemented. We know it's not cost-effective to have the contractor mobilize in multiple places. But, you know, that's, it's, they're public funds and the supervisors give us direction on how to use them. And as part of that capital improvement plan, that is the opportunity to provide input on how you would like to see the supervisors prioritize the roads. So. So what I'm going to do is provide the supervisors data about what are the best roads, what are the worst roads, and propose ways to attack the roads. So you all, you have the opportunity to provide input as well. So you may be more effective than I am, working with the board of supervisors. So.
So when do you get ready to do that? Are you going to come to town halls and get information there? Or do we have to watch and come to a board of supervisors? We need to put input in?
If invited, I will attend the town halls. So you may decide you don't want to see me after this. So, but if invited, I will attend. So Supervisor Crandall invited me to this and he's the first supervisor who reached out. So I'm attending one later this month in the Cobb Mountain area. So very flexible on where I go and when I should, when people would like me to show up. So we're here to, I'm very much a public servant and I serve the public through the supervisors. So.
You mentioned about a previous comment ago about the intersection of Ogden and Country Club being improved. Now, that's currently, as I understand, that I, for Mr. De Leon, when he was here last, he was actually a bit amused to have found it from Olive Country Club to the elementary school. That intersection was the only place where there, I think, was a crosswalk. Is that going to receive a lit crosswalk intersect, is that the improvement you're speaking of? Or he also, before he left, thought that that has to change. We have to have more crosswalks. It's an actual district school path. So.
Right.
Is that also in the works for improved and increasing crosswalks? Or is it just the intersection itself needs to be reformed and then from there on?
So what needs to, so my previous, a previous principal engineer applied for the grant. So I'm not certain what he provided in the estimate. What I intend to do is sit down with our consultant and develop new, develop more defined plans and to figure out what best serves the community. And we will go back and ask for more money if necessary. So if you want to invite me back and once we get that concept developed, I'm happy to share. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have anybody online?
All right. I have a couple of questions or maybe something you could comment about. I'm not sure if you've had enough time to fill yourself in. But any updates on the bridge on Foothill and the harbor dredging?
I would not be able to speak on the harbor dredging. That would be a water resources department issue. So just so you're aware, the board of supervisors, supervisors decided to split Scott's position into two positions. So we have a water resource, new water resources director who started last Monday. And so he would be the appropriate person to address that, too. As far as the bridge, you mentioned, I'm not familiar with that. So if you send me an email, I can look into the matter. So that's, I'll give you my email address. It's Glenn, G-L-E-N dot March, M-A-R-C-H, at lakecountyca.gov. So I would have to do a little research on that particular bridge.
It's almost more of a creek crossing. I believe it's one of the elder ones we actually have in town as well. It's been out for some.
Couple of years.
Yeah, over a couple of years. So.
So we may be working on it. I just don't recall it right now. And when you get my age, you understand. You don't recall things.
Thank you, Becky. And anybody else online? Anybody else online?
I do want to just make one more comment about our avenues. And such that when we transport people, people down the avenues who have fractures or significant injuries, we end up having to take the long route to the hospital, so to speak. We're legally supposed to take the most direct route, but we often have to double back or take another route to get out to the highway. Because if you could imagine with all the potholes and such that we have down our avenues, you know, somebody with an unstable fracture, you know, I don't have enough fentanyl and morphine to give that patient to go down there. So I know that Charlie had mentioned about our roads. But, you know, whatever we can do to give input to maybe be prioritized. Because when the initial plan came out, we were going to be first. And then the last that I've heard before you took over was that Cobb was going to be first and we were going to be last. So I'm not sure, other than, you know, giving input wherever we can, we would like to at least be moved up on that list.
So as part of that plan, the capital improvement plan, you'll be able to provide input to your supervisor about what you would like to see. So what I intend to do is to list out all the roads that we intend to do each year over the next 10 years. So that is what our chief administrative officer has asked of us. So we are working on that plan now. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. And Greg, did you have one before?
I have one question for you. That you brought up the walnut tree, so they're just going to come out and turn it out?
They're gonna, yes. Yeah. So.
On Wednesday, another big branch, maybe you should drive by and consult with Thirteenth. I don't know.
I've been by.
Yeah, well, and that one fell on Wednesday. I guess somebody today finally picked it up off of the street and put it up on the sidewalk on purpose. And the other half of it's in the yard.
Yeah, so we'll have someone out in the next probably two, three weeks. So I got involved with it about two weeks ago. So we'll address it.
Great. Thank you. Sorry about that. So moving on to the next item, we will have to, it's been withdrawn because we had code enforcement as an open option. We weren't able to make it. And it looks like, is there a last one?
So it's class for trash.
Oh, okay. So our next item is a discussion on the class for trash. If, EJ, did you want to bring that discussion up?
Thank you. Sorry I'm late, guys, but I'm glad that I was able to make it in time to give this report. Went really successful. I've seen mostly everyone here there, you know. I even was on the street at a house with Greg there. Remember that? But it went really well. The only downside is we were like three, so it was, last year we had 18 tons or 18 cubic yards, that's what they call it, right, cubic yards. This year was 17.66. We're close, we're right there, but, you know, but it went really well. We've seen cars going in and out. I did four truckloads. I know I've seen you guys doing some truck and car loads and all that stuff, too. So very successful. I know people were happy. And so, yeah, looking to see what we can do from there. This is the second one that the town council's been a part of, SIRF has been a part of. So looking at doing future endeavors and then even hope. Now that the data ticket for code enforcement's gone through, some of those fines are going to, like the code enforcement officer can go right there. And when people have these violations with garbage and things like that, they can use the garbage ordinance, administrative fines to take care of that. And that, this is, was obviously the short-term, you know, I guess, solution to at least keeping the town clean. So that's, that's, so hopefully, while we're still doing this, and I'm pretty sure we'll do another one. And once we do, hopefully by the time they start getting those fines in and that starts showing teeth and all that stuff, we can get to a better place with all this garbage and whatnot.
Yeah, I never, didn't get a flyer in the mail and nobody had, I talked to anybody.
Really?
Yeah. I haven't talked to anybody about it.
I'll check in with them because I think we got an invoice. So I better check on that.
I haven't met, talked to anybody about it.
And that, so then if that's the, well, I'll find out with, because I did get an invoice. I got like a, like, okay, thank you, you know, so I'll check. Okay. Well, I mean, last year we did have it go out, right? Did it go out? We had something? Oh, no, we did mailer. Well, no, we not, we did flyers, that's it. We, last year, we didn't get a chance to, but this year, I had it.
They're supposed to come in the mail, right?
They were, yes. Yeah.
Just think how many more people you, if everybody would get a mail.
I had it set up to be like in everybody's mailbox by latest Tuesday, the week, right before the 15th. So when I turned it in, it was, they were like, okay, it should get there no later than Tuesday, possibly Wednesday if anything goes wrong, but, well.
Next time.
Yeah. I just worry about getting it out sooner because then, you know, we're just getting people from everywhere.
Right.
But, you know, I guess it is what it is. We'll just make sure we get it out sooner to make sure that. And I don't, I don't understand, because like I said, I got the invoice, so I'm going to check it. Yeah.
All right. Thank you for the update for the class trash. And we have Senior Center. Oh, all right. So now we have as our next item, a discussion from the La Cern Alpha Senior Center. Mr. Charlie?
Oh.
Yeah, please.
Okay, the only thing that I have for the senior center is last week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, we were open till five o'clock for a cooling station. And we plan on doing it again this week, Tuesday through, through Friday, till five o'clock again. And AmeriCorps and the Red Cross has been real helpful in getting us some volunteers to help, too. That's always a big thing to stay open. And the other thing is, is we can always use volunteers for the, the, when we do our lunches, for somebody to sign in and at the thrift store. And if anybody has any, we're always looking for people to come and like do senior yoga, line dancing, any of those things. We have a few things now. We have a guy who teaches banjos for the seniors, who gets quite, a few people in now. Tai Chi on, on Fridays. And a crafts lady from the library does a crafts class one day a month. And, and then AA meetings on Fridays, too, in the afternoons and evenings. So, but we're always looking for activities and for volunteers and for help.
All right. We have one question on Zoom for you, Charlie. Go ahead, Kathy.
Charlie, would, would the center be able to stay open later than six o'clock if you had enough volunteers? My concern is that it's still hot at six o'clock and people's homes have been baking all day. So I just wondered about the timing.
Yeah, possibly, but quite frankly, like all last week, nobody was here after four. I mean, we can stay open, but nobody, it seems like they, we get all of the people that want to come in to cool down from about one to three, 12 to three. And after that, they want to go home. But, and we're going by the kind of, the same guidelines as the Red Cross, as their kind of guidelines right now. Because I think they had seven facilities open last, last week. And we were the, we were the first one to be open multiple days. Everybody else is only going to be open on Saturdays. But then, and some weren't even going to be open. And then I, I don't know what you would call it, but I think then they, some of the other places like Lakeport decided, well, they'd be open. But what they look for is, the Red Cross, their idea is to keep people in their homes and have them come here and cool down for a little bit and then be able to go back home. Same thing when it's a warming center in the wintertime. And what they, what they asked is if you can be open from, from one to six, if you could be open just any three hours in that hour range for people to come in and then go back home. And so we're basically open, like last week, we just incorporated in our, we're open from 10 to one for seniors. And then we have other rooms for other people till one o'clock. And then we bring them all into the, to the lunchroom after that from one. So we're, and, and we're open till five, unless there's nobody here before 4:30, then we just close up. But, so we're open four hours, technically from, from one to five. So anyway, yeah, if it, if it, if it would seem like we need it, we would definitely try to stay open longer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Becky. And our next item is a discussion and acceptance and possible update from Supervisor Crandall.
All right. So, let's see, I'll go. The, the main thing that we passed the budget a couple of weeks back after our meeting. And so the community-oriented policing copter will be in effect. That's been funded. It will, will come into effect in the near future. We talked about that last month. I don't know if you've heard about it, Dan. So it's basically, we have the roadmap task force in Clear Lake Oaks. You've heard of that one. It's that, but it's been enhanced into now community-oriented policing.
It's that, but it's been enhanced into now community-oriented policing and reformation so that that way it targets Nice and LaCern, but it still gives them the opportunity to go in other places. So they're just waiting for the roadmap task force in Clear Lake Oaks to, I guess, come to a close and then that will be implemented. They've already budgeted it. I've met the new sergeant. He's been patrolling in different areas. I've seen him already. So they're waiting for that to close out, but it'll be one of those targets. Plus code enforcement will be focused here as well, in LaCern and Nice. And so that's, that's what, that was approved in April, but now reaffirmed in, in the budget and so it'll close out once the roadmap task force closes out. So that's, that's coming to the near future. Let's see, they did, I don't know if you noticed, but a couple of weeks back, the LaCern Harbor was on the agenda. I pulled it from consent so we could talk about it being put out for bid so that that way that moves forward as well. So going out for bid, looking at, and in that discussion, Lars did mention that we're looking at that window of October through, you know, this year. So, so just letting you guys know that, that that was in those updates. Wanted to make sure he pulled that because it's been something we've been talking about for quite some time. Yeah, so that's, that's another, that's some other news. And I did confirm with Scott in his last budget hearing before you were probably at it as well, where I reminded him of the discussion we had about the schools, the safety, that grant, and that how I would be able to contribute some of the cannabis discretionary funds that I had. And he still mentioned that that was still something to be talked about. So I think I need to touch base with you on that at another time. But, but he did mention that here at this meeting. So when that, when and if that comes forward, you know, we'll go from there. But we do, I was appreciative that he still remembered it and was like, yes, I, we're still involved with that grant. I did go to the South Deal meeting at the end of last month as well. So that project for, and I have it, actually, they sent me the slide deck, so I, I wanted to make sure I had it for you all here, but what I can do is just put it on the Facebook page for you all to look at. So, and it's part of what, of course, you all worked on too. And you might have been in the meeting that day too.
No, I was in the meeting, I had a sergeant there, but you probably.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. And so they're, they just, they, they laid out everything that's taking place in, in a slideshow or in a plan. So that'll be moving forward and it has the specific areas so far in phase one and then phase two next year. So it is coming forward and that's great news. Thanks again to CHP for pushing that forward and Caltrans for giving us that opportunity as well. And the, I was mistaken that it was going to be those high intensity, you know, and I, but it is the flashing beacons. And I even noticed it now when I went to Mendocino, I'm like, or in Yucay, I was like, oh, these are the flashing beacons. These work just fine. So the fact that those will be there is really promising. When I had a meeting with them in April, they'd mentioned how they're going to work on the areas where people pass in the middle. They're going to look at options on how to stop that from happening. They're going to look at options to track big trucks that are trying to save time rather than having a, what do you call it, manifest to come through this area. So they're going to be able to track it. They're looking at findings. They have some, they have a mechanism already in place and they're going to look to put it at where each entry point is from, from Highway 20. So whether it be eastbound or westbound. So that's, that was great news as well. So, yeah. So that's all I have so far. I mean, I know there's more, but I just.
Awesome.
If you have questions.
Thank you. Any questions online? Nope. Any from Taylor? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Just public comment on things that are on the agenda, announcement to send to the journal. Public comment.
All right. So next item is actually just open public comment. Anybody have something to say or bring up on the other items that were on the agenda? Anybody online?
Nobody online.
All right. Oh, do, does anyone have any announcements otherwise? Anything ongoing? I don't have anything either. It's.
Okay.
Oh, all right. So the time is now, is it 7:05?
7:06.
All right. And I'd like to make a movement to adjourn the SIRF Town Hall. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh. So sorry, Becky.
Oh, second.
Oh. Thank you for that second, Becky. Perfect. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. And with that, we close the central meeting town hall and we will see you next month.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Becky. Bye, Becky.
Thank you, Becky. Bye.
Bye.
Thanks for finally getting, getting through.
Thank you, Thomas.